Is item four, which is approval of the minutes. Item four A, which is the regular session from July 19th, 2022. Any changes, additions, or deletions? You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair, on page nine at the top, it says that these are the June 21st minutes that were approved, not the July 19th. I think that's just a type of.
You noted, Mr. Malinowski. Any additional changes, additions, or deletions? Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt, adopt the agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Not the agenda, I'm sorry. A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any additional discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Approved.
Next item on the agenda is item four B, approval of the minutes from the zoning public hearing from July 26, 2022. Any additions, changes, or deletions?
Changes.
There being none, I'll entertain a motion. A move?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski? Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron? O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item four C, which is a special call meeting from July 26, 2022. Any additions, deletions, or changes? All right. There being none, I entertain a motion.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Okay. They're moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, which is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes?
A move? Second.
Discussion.
Recording in progress.
My understanding that I believe the county attorney may have wanted an item.
Yes, I would like to add something to my report and add it under six, as six E, Board of Voter Registration and Elections.
Additional discussion regarding that item being added to the agenda as item six E for our executive session? All right. There being none, okay. So. I entertain a motion to have that item added.
Move as amended.
All right, it's been moved to properly second. Any additional discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Baron? I'm sorry, Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is items, item six, which is a report of the attorney for executive session items. Mr. Wright?
Yes, I have a few items for the report. State versus Tyler. A, B, Mitchell versus Richland County. C, Harris versus Richland County. D, Alvin Escland Detention Center. And E, Board of Voter Registration and Elections.
Any outside of council involved in any of these items, Mr. Wright?
There's none.
Okay, so it's all right if we were to hear these items later in our session?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item seven, which is citizens' input. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that has signed up to speak this evening. John Ziegler? Yes, please, if you would come up front to the mic and state your first and last name, as well as your address. And then you'll be given two minutes to speak and you'll hear a timer when your two minutes has ended.
Okay, I'm John Ziegler, 103 Roundtree Road, Blythewood, South Carolina. I'm just here, I don't know if I'm in even the right place, but recently it was brought to our attention that a developer was gonna start a new subdivision behind ours. And they were gonna splice into, into Roundtree Road, which is in Stonington subdivision, which is right off of Highway 21. We already have 150 or 70 houses in there that are trying to exit that, exit every day. And it's, it's tough to get out on Highway 21. But the real problem, concern my have is this new subdivision's gonna have 150 new homes, which is gonna put at least 300, maybe 350 cars coming up our little Roundtree Road every single morning going to work. There's other places available, they can build this road, but I think they're choosing this one because it's closer and easier. But we have no sidewalks in our subdivision. We have kids that have to walk the school buses. We have kids that, people that walk their dogs in the street because it's kind of a quiet little subdivision right now. But if you add 350 cars between seven and eight o'clock every morning, and then 350 cars back, coming back home at between five and seven, it's not gonna be a quiet subdivision no more. And I just wanted, I don't know how many people, I mean, probably not something on everybody's agenda, but I guess it was on my agenda. And this is the first time I've ever been to like a city council meeting or any kind of mouse, kind of council meeting. So if I mess up, I apologize. That's all I wanted, just wanted to, I know some of the people in my subdivision have concerns and they really don't want this to happen. I mean, it's, that is just, there's just too many, there'd be too many, 350 cars is a lot of cars blasting through our subdivision. They haven't, they'll have no vested interest in our subdivision. So there'll be no reason for them to, you know, give, care about the kids walking on the street or the dogs that are thereby or the people thereby. They're, they're, they're only agenda in the mornings can be go to work. That means I'm done, okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that, thank you, Mr. Ziegler, you did just fine, I appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that signed up to speak this evening.
Madam Vice Chair, next item on the agenda is item eight, citizens' input, which must pertain to Richland County matters down on the agenda. Items which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. And you said, Madam Vice Chair, no one else has signed up to speak, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, no one has signed up for this input session, no sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nine, which is a report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, good evening. In your packet, beginning on page 30, you will find my report. I briefly want to just touch bases with you on the information that you have there. And you can look at the details and have any future questions that you may have sent to my direction. But the first thing I want to do would just point out, under my other updates, I do just want to take a moment, Mr. Chair, and share with members of council, something that we received during the Association of Counties meeting, acknowledging one of the programs that we submitted for recognition. And that was our emergency rental assistance program, which to this point, we've worked with citizens in Richland County and provided over $26 million to folks who need a rental and utility assistance. And one of the things that we received for our submission was this nice acknowledgement. I'm just gonna take a moment and stand, Mr. Chair, so you all can see it, because I am proud on behalf of Richland County of the efforts. And so just wanted to take a moment and show you that it is a nice recognition that you're on. So I just want to certainly thank you for your support, as well as all the men and women in Richland County and our community partners who have assisted in that effort. Moving on down the line, Mr. Chair, at the Institute of Government, at the conference, we also were pleased to have two members of Richland County recognized for their continued education, if you will. One was Ms., Councilmember, Ms. Keesh Newton of District 11. She received both her Level One and Level Two curriculum recognition. And I, as the county administrator, completed my Level Two. So I know some other members of council are participating in those programs that have already gone through that. We just want to communicate to the community that we're continuing to try to elevate our abilities to serve. Also, I did have the pleasure of serving as a panelist. And, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you received the letter, I saw you receipted on it. And it just basically said that Richland County, as the county administrator, received a lot of good feedback for the presentation and a lot of good reviews, so I just want to share that with you. I'm proud of that on behalf of our organization and my ability to represent myself. So thank you all for that opportunity that you've given me as the administrator. Moving on down to the SEDOT project, in your packet, you have a overview of a future project that SEDOT is gonna be announcing to the public. I believe they say they're gonna start that in October with some meetings to follow in November. But that's just an overview for you to get an idea of where that's going in terms of interstate bridge repair. Also, in your packet, what you have is a notification of an entity that's actually being funded to help county governments like ourselves and other entities by providing services that they've already been paid for to help get funding. So I intend on utilizing these services. It doesn't require the council to, to take any action, it doesn't require any agreements. It's just a service that's already paid for, that's gonna allow us to tap into some potential funding resources. So I do plans on, on using that free resource. Also, I had in the packet, just a notification that we had men and women of Richland County who participated in PBS NewsHour. And if you're familiar with that, that's a pretty big deal. We were one of the counties that was recognized as providing services and trying to do innovative things to address the shortage in personnel. So there were several organizations that were represented, but Richland County was one of them. So we had men and women of our own employment who did a great job. If you hadn't looked at it yet, it's probably about maybe eight minutes or so, and it really is a good look. So thank you to those men and women, and again, thank you, Richland County Council, for your support of our local government efforts. The last thing I'll point out to you, that's not here in the packet, is just something that I think you all asked about before you went on the break. Richland County has posted our information concerning the road user fee. That was one of the requirements. That information can be found on the county's main webpage. Clearly says road user fee, you click on it, it will show you for the last 10 years, how much was collected and how much was charged in that fee. So we have complied with that requirement that was recently put in place. With that being said, Mr. Chair, certainly will take any questions from members of council at this time, if there are any questions.
Questions or comments from the body in response to the administrator's report? There being none, well, Mr. Brown, thank you for that report. What does, I'm assuming that concludes your report, right?
It does, it concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Don't want to be presumptuous.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 10, which is the report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Chairman Walker, I just want to remind everyone that the next council meeting is scheduled for September the 13th, and it's also a special call meeting. That concludes my report.
You. Next item on the agenda is item 11, which is the report of the chair. At this time, the chair does not have any updates or announcements, but I would like to exercise a point of personal privilege and just acknowledge some of our colleagues, beginning with Councilwoman Newton, I believe. Mr. Brown has already stated that Ms. Newton completed some courses at the South Carolina Association of Counties Conference, their Institute of Government, so wanted to just acknowledge that accomplishment. I also wanted to acknowledge Councilwoman Allison Teracio, who was named, or elected, rather, as chair of the COMET. And so that is a pretty big deal, the COMET, which is the Central Midlands Regional Transportation Authority. As many of you know, it's responsible for public transit in the Midlands. And so our colleague has been elected to chair such an important position. So just wanted to recognize, recognize her on that. And then also, we have Councilman Derek Pew. I believe recently he was named, or elected, rather, chair of the membership committee for the South Carolina Coalition of Black County Officials at the South Carolina Association of Conference. And so that's a pretty big deal as well, so want to congratulate you. And I believe also our, also our colleague, our former vice chair, Ms. McBride, I believe she currently presides as the vice chair, you know, for that committee as well. And so acknowledging her. And then one more acknowledgement for Mr. Pew, and that is, he has, he and his wife have welcomed a beautiful daughter by the name of Mila. And so I'm assuming that she's gonna be watching her daddy pretty closely, and she's probably aiming to be the next councilperson for the mighty District Two. But congratulations to you and your, your wife, Mr. Pew. And again, I did not have any, did not have a report, but I guess you could say that concludes, you know, any, I guess, announcements or acknowledgements from the chair. Next item on the agenda is item 12, which is a public hearing. Item 12A, that's an ordinance amending the school resource offer salon item in the fiscal year 2023. Budget ordinance number 012-22-HR of Richland County, South Carolina. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individual signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and that public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 13, which is approval of consent items. Item 13A, which is case number 22.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the consent items, 13A, B, and C.
Second.
Moved to properly second, and, well, the discussion's necessary, so Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski? Mc, Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 14A, which is a third reading item, that it's an ordinance amending the school resource office salon item in the fiscal year 2023. Budget ordinance number 012-22-HR of Richland County, South Carolina. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Is there a second? It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Sure. Recognize, Mr. O'Walker?
Moved to reconsider the previous item.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? Um, that's the third reading, Mr. Racio. All right. All right, there being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
Oh.
Livingston? Teresha?
Uh, nope.
Joe Walker?
Oh.
Baron?
No.
O'Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 15, second reading items, 15A, case number 22-013MA, Patrick Palmer. This is a request to go from light industrial to general commercial at 310 Killian Road. TMS number R14600-03-16. I will entertain a motion.
Vote to approve.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, which is a report of the Administration and Finance Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Bill Malinowski. Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item pa, pages 60 to 67 contains the risk management report about fleet services. In short, we need to add another building on the side of what's currently there in order to be able to do the proper work at the July 26th, proper work on the vehicles here. At the July 26th ANF Committee meeting, it was recommended that council approve the selection of the Hoover Metal Buildings Contractor for construction of the canopy work area for the side shop at the central garage facility and the addition of an extended side of the building, increasing the dimensions of the working space. And the Hoover Metal Buildings contracting was selected based on them being the only submitter to the request. So the committee's recommendation is to approve item 16A.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Mr. Malinowski.
I want to correct that statement I, that I made at the very end, my last line. There was a bid that was put out for the project and no responses were received. So administration selected this company and asked that they would do this work based on their previous experience with county projects. I believe that's the accurate statement there. That concludes my report, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski. Next item on the agenda is item 17, which is a report of the Economic Development Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you recognize her?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 17A, authorized expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County, the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement to provide for infrastructure credit to Project Bulldog and other related matters. Mr. Chair, this, this item is a reference to a redevelopment proposal regarding Richland Mall. And what the committee is recommending is that we move forward with, with first reading by title only tonight. And at our next council meeting, we'll have a full presentation for council in executive session.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Is, are there any questions or any discussion? There being none? Oh, I'm sorry, you recognize Ms. McBride?
I think, is this not a?
I would say it's, it's consistent to some, similar to some of the ones we have.
We've done this type of development before, because that's, I just, I had to get the projects, we have so many different names. So we've done this type of development before. I just wanted to make sure that this is consistent with the process that we've always used. And I thought that this was somewhat different.
Oh, no, it's not different and, and the details of the project we, we'll be discussing after, at our next meeting. But, but no, there, there have been similar ones, yeah.
Can I have that confirmed by Mr. Ruble?
Ruble, your line? Ruble's present, he's in the gallery. Mr. Ruble, come on down, please. And if you, Ms. McBride, if you don't mind, maybe re-ask the question?
Mr. Ruble, I know that there are certain types of development we have. And I was wondering, with this regional industrial park, is this a normal process that we're going through with this one?
Well, with the commercial development process, the details are a little different than some of the other projects we've seen where we followed, followed some, sort of some pretty standard guidelines. But as far as the timing and doing this first reading by title only, the reason we're doing that is because there's a short due diligence period, and then they, they need to move the project forward. So we granted them that. That's, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
I'm talking about the project itself.
Yeah, it's a little different than some of them, but you know, the commercial development projects, we have guidelines. We're using the same tools, but we're a little outside those guidelines.
And that's why I was concerned about doing a first reading, because we are already outside of the guidelines. And then to try and rush through a first read, and I just had concerns about it. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or discussion, or anything else from the body? Are there any additional, um, questions or discussion or anything else from the body? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Oh.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Um, Madam Clerk, I'm recusing myself. I apologize for not saying that before we began the vote, but, um, I submitted paperwork ahead of the meeting stating I'm recusing myself Due to my parent company representing the client involved or the business involved.
Thank you. English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Livingston, you're recognized.
Item seventeen B, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ever learning taxes, tax agreement between Richland County And Project Dawson identifying the project and other matters related thereof. Committees recommendations for approval for this induced, decent resolution.
Recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Ma- O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda, well, I'm sorry, you still have the floor, Mr. Livingston.
Um, offer execution deliver fee in lieu of ever learn tax incentive agreement by and between Richland County, um, and Project Dawson To provide for paper fee in lieu of taxes authorized in certain instruct, infrastructure credit agreements related to those matters. This Chair, the committee's recommendations for approval for first reading of this item.
Heard the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? Right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that completes the report of the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, um, Mr. Livingston. Next item on the agenda is Item eighteen, which is the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. That will be provided by the Honorable, um, Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, Item eighteen A is approval of the Reserve Fund Use Plan. In your packet, you'll see that the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee, um, does recommend council approve the request to move the remaining balance Of, uh, a little over thirty-one million dollars from the administrative debt service cost and to transfer to the general fund proceeds To the program reserve fund to be used as county council approves for referendum projects. Um, I did want to just highlight for council members, we've talked about, um, kind of reserve funds in the past and the use. And, um, just making sure that it is clear, it is not, um, the committee's intentions nor were any directions given to staff On any particular projects for the funds to be used on or, um, for staff to kind of move forward, but it's saying we're putting this over to The side and council will be notified before future decisions are made regarding funds.
You've heard the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Vice Chair, that concludes the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is Item nineteen, which is other items, nineteen A, fiscal year twenty-three. You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to vote on all the hospitality tax allocations as one, that would be nineteen A, B, C, D, and E, and I'd make a motion to approve all those.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Got move for reconsideration.
Second.
Okay.
Properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Pugh.
Oh.
McBride.
Oh.
Livingston.
Oh.
Teresa.
Oh.
Joe Walker.
Oh.
Baron.
No.
O Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is Item nineteen F, which is adoption of the comprehensive council rules. Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we just received some recent information from the legal department Of which there may be some discussions needed, uh, to spruce these rules up a little bit. So I would make a motion at this point to defer any action on this until we get that legal department input.
Second. Properly second, any discussion? Uh, Mr. Malinowski, I do have a question. Your motion is to defer it, um, and you don't want this one?
Next council meeting, which I believe the court said was September thirteenth.
I want this going back to committee, right? I'm, I'm, I'm asking as part of the discussion, I'm not.
I, I understand. That's where I was originally going to Senate, but, uh, if, if my colleagues think we want to do that, I mean, I've got some nos and some yeses. This way we can keep it on the agenda so that it's ready to go after we get all the input from legal.
Additional discussion, no questions. There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
It was, well, the audience, the viewing audience, that was not intended for, for my Vice Chair. There was a, um, an insect on, on my glass barrier here. Uh, next item on the agenda is Item nineteen G, which is, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-six, it's a five-year consolidated plan In our fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual action plan. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Vote for proof, Mr. Chair.
Second. Has been properly second, any discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is Item. You're recognized. Uh, you recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. I, I apologize. Under my report, I needed to, um, have a motion to reconsider for Item eighteen A, and I
Is there a second? Second. Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Oh.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Uh.
Teresa.
Oh.
Joe Walker.
Oh.
Baron.
No.
O Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
Madam Clerk, I will change my vote to no.
Heard me say no and thought it was wrong.
Ms. Mackey, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, you recognize, Ms. McBride?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this, um, is there a second? Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Oh.
Mc, uh, Pugh.
No.
McBride.
Oh.
Livingston.
Oh.
Teresa.
No.
Joe Walker.
Oh.
Baron.
Oh.
O Walker.
Oh.
Mackey.
Oh.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is not, Item nineteen H, which is the American Rescue, Rescue Plan Act Fund Grant Application in the Process. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? Uh, you recognize, Ms. McBride?
Mr. Chair, uh, I am. It was my understanding, I thought that we were going to have a, uh, a blue ribbon task force to ensure that All of the citizens of Richland County had the opportunity to have input. Um, but with that said, um, I am willing to move forward, but I have one, one issue with the rubric Um, that I've been trying to get, um, made available. And I gave council members a copy of a, a sample of a rubric so that they could maybe understand what I was speaking of. If you give a rubric during your evaluation, it helps the person that's writing the grant In terms of looking, in terms of determining what they need to put in the grant and what type of a grading that they would get. It also help, helps the person that's reviewing the grant because they can look and see if, if they have this amount, then we get maybe one point. If they have this amount, we get two points. So it makes it easier, um, for everybody And makes it for a more pure process, in my opinion. Um, so one thing I would like to ask of the, uh, the council If they would ask the vendor, whoever that is, to maybe, um, look at the rubric and see if they could improve on, on that part of it. So that would be my motion to, um, have the rubric section improved, um, and that's page, um, I don't have the page.
Four eleven.
Four eleven.
I believe. Four ten.
Or ten. Or ten.
Through thirteen.
Thank you. The other part is that I think that, uh, it's my opinion that, um, too many points were given to the budget, thirty-five points. I would recommend that they reconsider maybe thirty points and then put five additional points to the project summary. Um, and also it was, it was sort of difficult for me and For me as a professional, as I'm assuming for a layperson, it would even be more difficult in terms of understanding Armors under the budget and what are you looking for? That said, that would be a motion for approval, look at the budget point At the thirty and project sum That.
All right, so Ms. McBride, just so, not just me, but the rest of council can follow, um, could you, I guess, restate the motion? Yeah, or again, you know, so this is a substitute motion in essence, right? You making a substitute motion?
Yeah, I'm making a substitute motion.
Okay, so just restate the substitute motion.
Okay, the substitute motion is to have the administrator look at the rubric sample And to see if they could provide more details, and I gave an example of that. And also to look at decreasing the number of points for the budget from thirty-five to thirty Or the project summary, which includes the details of the project from twenty-five to thirty.
A second. Properly second, any discussion? Uh, you recognize Ms. Baron and then Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, whereas I do, uh, understand where Ms. McBride is coming from With the adjustments of, of the points and even more so clarity on the rubric. I'm not certain that I fully support the idea of may, of, of changing what's already in place, but perhaps Using, um, the guidance that you provided us tonight as some additional information that we can provide to the applicants. Um, I think that the process that we, that we've undergone for the past months and even now to have This document even strengthen more so over the past month. I think says volumes about the, the way that we're going and, and I want to be real clear that I've always said from day one That we want these funds to get in the people's hands, everyday people's hands, so they can support their org, organizations Uh, in expanding the services that they're, they've been doing for many years. And, and I think that the process, even being so close to the process and a part of the committee, I think that the process now, when I look at it from a different, with a different lens, I feel comfortable and I feel like this is something strong, a strong packet that we can get when, once it's coupled with, um, With technical assistance, uh, where the workshops can, uh, be held so the general public can clearly understand what's being asked of them. I think that we're, we're in a good place. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Malinowski and then Ms. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions have to do with some of these dates, uh, Administrator Brown, page three seventy-two at the very Opening line and on page three seventy-three on the first bullet point. It refers to grant applications for these fund grants beginning no later than August first. Yeah, we're just in the process of approving these applications in the process right now, which is August thirtieth. So are these going to be changed and the closing dates extended accordingly?
Actually, the opening date would be no later than, uh, September first. And so that, that day should actually be September first. And then you do want the application closing date to remain the way that is, Mr. Malinowski, so you can begin to get people's information in And then go through those packets. Uh, and if you recall, we talked about doing that And it doesn't mean that that will be the only time. We talked about having a rolling, um, timeframe. So this is just to get it rolling, uh, and there will be other opportunities after the September deadline With the assumption that all the funds have not already been allocated through this process.
And also on page three seven three, the very last paragraph that begins Failure to comply with all grant requirements may result in forfeiture of the award. Is that forfeiture of the award prior to them getting it? Or after they get it, they have to pay it back? How's that going to work?
There could be a combination. So you won't necessarily get all the funds upfront. There's a drawdown. So if you're not meeting the targets associated with the federal guidelines, then you could not receive additional funding And you could be responsible for the payback of funding you have already received.
Okay, and on page three eighty-one, where you have the administrative systems and you have yes and no checkboxes on That page following through to the next page, uh, there have been billions of dollars obtained from what I have looked at fraudulently From these types of funds since the federal government started this program. So based on that fact, who's going to verify That the responses to these questions in section four are accurate?
So part of.
Hope there's some verification rather than just believing somebody with a yes or no check mark.
So if you would go to page, I believe it's four nine on my screen, it may be different than yours, but four nine or four thirteen. Um, the third party vendor, uh, that we were select, uh, if you look at one of the components of their role, They talk about subrecipient monitoring and compliance review. So the third party provider that we are selecting, uh, part of their responsibility will be to do that, um, through a, a process. But ultimately, Mr. Malinowski, that is the responsibility of the organization, um, that is submitting the information. But we do have a, uh, a provider who will be purposely trying to, uh, make sure they are eligible for those funds.
And I thought that's where we were. I just wanted to be sure that somebody's checking on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Recognize, Ms. McBride?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to, um, make additional comments. Um, I added the rubric Um, for the purpose of making it clearer and easier for many of our grant writers out of there. Nonprofits that don't have a lot of experience writing grants, this helps them to write the grant. As well as for the reviewers, it takes the subjectivity away from some of it, from, um, reviewing the grant. So that was the purpose. So that was the purpose. But I have no problems with, I don't want to hold the grant process up any longer because we've had it a long time. We've got to have several committees review it and, and be out to the public. But we've done a good job. We're doing a fair job of getting it completed. So I don't want to hold that process up. And if we could take the recommendations that I've given and look to it to add later, I don't have an issue with that, Mr. Chair. I just want to make it a simpler process for-
Yes, so I understand you, Ms. McBride. So you've got, you've made them the substitute motion, which is, you know, depending on how the vote goes, will direct staff to incorporate, you know, your recommendation. So are you withdrawing that motion now? Or you still want to proceed with that motion?
Can I ask Mr. Brown a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, how long would it take to incorporate some of the recommendations I made?
So specifically, one of the things you talked about was changing the points to thirty-thirty versus twenty-five and versus thirty-five. So I'll need to make sure that that's what you're talking about. That won't take long. Then the other thing is, we can certainly provide what you shared with us tonight to Grant Thornton and them take a look at what we have here to see how they could build that out if that makes sense for them. I don't think they're going to buck at us providing them that. But what I don't want to do is, is get the impression that the exact wording that was in what you provided will match what we will be sending out or anything like that.
Oh, no, that was just a sample. It has nothing to do with the wording. Okay, and so, let me continue. How long, going back to Mr. Malinowski's question, when would you like to have this out?
The, we want to have it out no later than September first. That's what we wanted to be. In the next couple of days. Yes, ma'am.
So if that were, Mr. Chair, if that were, I'm sure that's going to pose a problem then if you want it out at September the second. So I, I will, will withdraw my substitute motion.
Okay, so noted.
And the, how long, again, I wanted to repeat it. When will be the deadline or if, I want to make clear, if there's a deadline for applying?
The first rolling deadline, assuming council approves what we recommending here, will be, the opening application will be open at September first, 2022, and close September thirtieth, 2022. That would be the first rolling deadline.
Now, do you feel that, I don't feel that that's adequate time, the closing thirty-first, because it's going to take a while to roll it out and to get the information out. So you're asking people to maybe develop a, a really big grant in less than three weeks before we, they're not aware of it. Many people are not aware of it, of the proposal coming, that those that get grants from us all the time, the ones that are waiting in the wind, they know about it. But those others that we're trying to reach that have not had the opportunity to apply before and are not that knowledgeable, that's not giving them a lot of turnaround time, in my opinion, for-
So I, I can't dispute what you're saying. I don't have a way to do that. What I can say, the idea, we do have people who have been calling us and asking us, when are we going to open this application process up? There has been media coverage over it and people have said, when are we going to open it up? So I'm not sure which folks those are. I just know we have received that. And again, this is not designed to be a one-time. This is just an initial, let's start trying to get folks applied, let's start moving the money. So we certainly don't expect that this will be the only information and the only time that this is addressed. So I, I really don't have another way of approaching that, Ms. McBride.
Well, I think that the September, the thirtieth deadline is not enough time for those people to apply. Given that, I'm not going to make a motion to change it. I just want to voice my opinion, I feel about. Also, in terms of the public relation, I think that we need to invest money in, in making announcements, having, actually having a press conference with you or, or Mr. Chair, you, announcing that these funds will be also, because oftentimes the people that need the funds, they don't, they don't use our website and it doesn't get out to them. So I would like to encourage us to use, use TV and ra-
McBride, Mr. Brown, anything else from you?
No, Mr. Chair, we, we're just waiting for the council to make a decision on how you want to proceed and we will proceed accordingly.
Okay, we back to the original motion. So I'll, I entertain a motion for approval.
A move, Mr. Chair.
Move the properly second. No additional discussion. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Oh.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, can we-
Recognize Ms. Baron, I believe was going to make the motion, but she was preempted by Mr. Livingston. It's already been seconded by Mr. Joe Walker. Any discussion, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
No.
Terisha.
No.
Joe Walker.
Baron.
No.
O'Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty, which is executive session.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Ms. Baron?
If I may, just before we go to executive session and item twenty, take a point of personal privilege, please. I will be brief.
It's been a month, Ms. Baron. You don't have to be brief.
I will be brief, but I just think that it goes to say that the coronavirus at hot committee, we have been working for some time with administration and making sure that we had a solid document and we had things in place so that when these funds go out to the community, that individuals would have something there. So I'm excited that we are now to the point where people can start to apply for these dollars. And then the next step of excitement will be once they are implementing their program. So thank you to my colleagues for just digging in and helping us push this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty, executive session. Those items were moved from the agenda, early in the agenda, but it's item six A, State v. Tyler, item six B, Mitchell versus Richland County, item six C, Harris versus Richland County, item six D, Davinesland Detention Center, and item six E, which is the Board of Elections and Registration. And it's my understanding that we're going into, well, there's requests to go into executive session to receive legal advice as it pertains to each one of these matters pursuant to stock line of statute, you know, thirty dash four dash seventy subsection B. I entertain a motion.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Move the properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terisha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now in executive session.
Which way?
Mr. Walker will stay downstairs.
Thank you.
To come out of executive session.
Second.
So we moved to property second, any discussion? There being none. Um. And clerk, take the vote, please.
Alanowski.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Aaron.
Aaron.
Also let the record reflect that councilwoman Newton is also present this evening and glad to have you, Ms. Newton. As always, all right, and so went into executive session on the items six, A, B, C, D, and E. And those were, uh, those are all items where we received counsel rather receive legal advice and no action was taken. Right, next item on the agenda is item twenty-one, which is the motion period. Item twenty-one A appears to be the Honorable Bill Malinowski and the Honorable Gretchen Barron. Uh, either Mr. Malinowski or Ms. Barron, whichever, whoever the two of you would like to, uh, you know, proceed with the motion. Is Baron or Mr. Malinowski? Mr. Malinowski.
I'll take that, Mr. Chair. And this is number twenty-one A where attorney just summarizes attorney right advised committee chairs that there is an ordinance that does not allow council members when making motions to direct anyone except the administrator or the clerk to counsel to request work on a matter. And so the wording many times in the past could have been used direct staff, direct another person, but it should be strictly the direct the administrator or the clerk to counsel. And so this motion was to request the clerk to review all pending motions, make sure that the language is corrected. And if it's not corrected so that it will be in accordance with our ordinance. And if any additional information is needed, the clerk should contact the legal department.
Oh, just there, second.
No. Right, I was going to say we'd like to ask for Ms. Baron and I for unanimous consent to get this approved tonight.
Well. All right, Madam Clerk, uh, take the vote.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one B. That is a motion from the Honorable Shaqis Newton. Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Want me to just address the motion?
May or you may read your motion.
I cannot read my motion at present. Um, so my motion is requesting a review of the rank weeds and vegetation ordinance, which covers things like grass and other items that can be nuisances for code enforcement. Um, we've had several meetings and conversations with both the administrator and the county attorney about some of the concerns of our constituents. And I'm just requesting that it be reviewed for opportunities to improve it particularly as it affects blank.
And clerk, now take the vote.
Alanowski.
I mean. Committee first.
It's gotta go to.
Okay, so.
Some kind of info.
Okay, so it needs to go to committee. Well, someone tell me, well, Ms. Newton, do you have a committee where you want this to go to?
I figured it would go to DNS, but.
DNS, okay, so you want us to go to DNS committee? All right, that's where it goes. And thank you, everyone, for that correction. All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty-one C, um, is a motion by Mr. Malinowski. Ms. Malinowski, you recognize?
Hey, Ms. Chair, this motion I came up with after reading about a study that's going to help demonstrate to local government and others where we need to preserve undeveloped land and trees, plant additional tree, trees, or build other green infrastructure to reduce or prevent heat islands in Richland County. And this was coming from our division manager of community planning and development, Mr. Quentin Epps. So based on that information, I am requesting that the administrator determine if any fur- further action should be taken by the planning commission or council related to the new land development code until we make this determination and find out where we need to preserve this land or plant additional things. So that's my motion is requesting the administrator to make a determination on that.
Alanowski, uh, where do you want this to go? Cause I.
By the administrative. Either committees under the DNS. Looks like they're having a sidebar over there, so.
Mr. Pew is laughing a little too hard at that one.
Yes, sir, I was having a, I guess the sidebar would be appropriate, um, because we were looking at the language. Uh, and it seemed like this would, uh, impact, um, work that is done by the planning commission. And so I was asking the county attorney in so many words, would that be something that could be done considering that this would impact the planning commission and what their role is.
Right, and ultimately, uh, Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Mr.?
Uh, ultimately, it would have to be something that go before the planning commission. Uh, whether it comes directly from the full council or from, uh, the committee. Either way, it would have to go through the planning commission, um, before it was voted on by the full council.
So I put planning commission in there, let the committee figure it out.
Right, but the way it's worded too, you, I guess you can't really direct the planning commission to do something, but you can, um, you can uh, state the issue and it's the one, if it's, uh, involved, um, related to development or zoning, it would automatically have to go through the planning commission.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Right. So we just wanted to send this to DNS. We just sent it to the DNS committee.
Sure.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Pew. You recognize, uh, Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, we've been provided something that was inadvertently left off of our agenda on the hospitality tax allocation request. And so in order to get that done, I was advised it was, uh, appropriately submitted to the clerk's office, uh, quite some time ago. So I would like to reconsider the agenda so we can add this item.
The second?
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? You recognize, um, Ms. Mackey?
I'm sorry, just for the record, can you specify the item that we are reconsidering?
For the record, the item would be for fiscal year twenty-three, a district five hospitality tax allocation.
All right, any discussion? There be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Alanowski.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
For the record, that matter would be added to the agenda as nineteen I, that's nineteen I. Uh, and at this time I'll entertain a motion.
To approve?
Okay.
Let's remove the properly second, any discussion? There be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresha.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
For reconsideration.
Second.
We'll probably second, any discussion? There be a nun, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Alanowski.
Oh.
You.
Oh.
McBride.
No.
Livingston. Teresha.
No.
Joe Walker.
Sorry.
Baron.
No.
O Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton. Motion fails.
Don't have any, uh, further business, I entertain a motion for.
Good journey.
Second.
Move to properly second, uh, that's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Oh, no, I miss yours. Okay, yes.
Teresha.
Uh, yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We are adjourned.